Hello, welcome to the Tuesday, March 12th, 2024. Working session of the Planning Commission for the City of Ann Arbor. To kick off our agenda, we have two sessions for open public comment. One at the beginning and one at the end. So this will be our first session for public comment. People can speak for up to three minutes about any item. Please state your name and address for the record. You can use the raise hand feature in Zoom.
I do not see any raised hands.
Okay, then we will move on to the agenda. And there's another opportunity for public comment at the end of our meeting as well. So we have one item on the agenda this evening and it is a presentation for 2845 South State. For early feedback and consideration, the mixed use project will involve existing and new buildings and is anticipated to include hotel space, multifamily housing, retail and parking. So we'll give Nick Kelly an opportunity to promote our presenters into the meeting.
Thank you. I didn't do so already because I thought we may have at least one public commenter.
While we're waiting for that to happen, I can.
Am I the only one experiencing cut out of Commissioner Abrams?
No.
Well, I think everybody else seemed to be moving and she's frozen.
Well, she is steady at the helm.
Could I ask Mr. Covert, is there anyone who remains in need of being promoted?
Uh, hey, yeah, Hank, we would be looking for Matt.
I don't see Matt on the attendee list.
Matthew?
No, you could maybe check to ensure that that person is named the same on Zoom as they are in conversation.
Do you know that to be the case, Ben?
Yeah, I think.
Does, does Matt work for Lord X Sergeant?
Yes, he does. Yep.
Matt, please raise your hand if you are indeed online. Okay, and please rename yourself. That person is being promoted.
Thank you.
So my, my internet crap crashed for a minute, so I left and I just came back and I'm not sure where we are.
I think you were asking for me to promote our guests. And if you're okay with it, Vice Chair, they can continue to their presentation.
Great, welcome. Yeah, go ahead and proceed with your presentation. We're looking forward to seeing it. Thanks.
Thank you. Real quick, are you guys able to see my screen sharing some slides? Thank you. All right. All yours, Jeff.
Thank you. Thank you. And thanks so much for allowing us the time. I'm Jeff Hauptman with Oxford Companies. We're a local commercial real estate firm based here and like Oxford, I'm a townie. I'm a product of our public school system from Thurston, Clegg to Huron to the U of M. And I've been committed to improving place making and putting space to more productive use in our city for over 30 years. And I now have the pleasure of introducing to you Arbor South. It's a transformative infill development on State and Eisenhower. Tom, let's go to the next slide. Six years ago, we looked out the window of 777 East Eisenhower at the corner of State and Eisenhower and stared at over 10 acres of parking lot. We knew we could do better. And the 777 and 789 buildings side by side there have half a million square feet of office space on a 20 acre parcel. And we feel like it's time for some upgrades. Our plan is to bring to Ann Arbor over 1,000, 1,000 units of fully electric housing. Over 200 of which will be affordable, 60% AMI, 200 units. A much needed 150 key full service hotel. And over 100,000 square feet of walkable supportive retail that will allow both residents and office tenants to walk to lunch and dinner instead of having to get in the car. By building density like this on the transit corridor, we aim to reduce vehicular trips and lower vehicular miles traveled. Along with getting cars off the road, we're creating a healthier lifestyle for our residents and civic plazas for everyone in the area to gather. Within the mixed use context, neighbors will enjoy biking and walking to amenities such as farmers markets and concerts, as well as restaurants and entertainment. The site is Zone TC1, and this will be the first TC1 project in the state and Eisenhower area. The TC1 has a lot of strengths, but there's still some tweaks that are necessary. Something we'll talk more about tonight. Based on the mix of uses such as existing office, future hotel and retail, structured parking will be important. That said, we're very proud of working to lower our current parking ratios by optimizing parking peak demand during the staggered hours of activation. Overall, this is a 1.75 million square foot development, not including the parking structures. It's a template for what we can do under TC1. By comparison, Briarwood Mall is less than a million square feet. And unlike Briarwood, our overall parking ratio will be an incredibly low 1.2 spots, 1.2 parking spots per thousand square feet. That's down from the current parking ratio that we currently have at that 777 of three spots per, over three spots per thousand. We plan to add about 1.2 million square feet of housing, retail and hotels and only add approximately 600 parking spots. This is something that will be required based on existing office leases. Another way of looking at this is after accounting for the hotel and retail uses, we're adding less than about 200 parking spots per 1,000 apartments being built. Let's go to the team, Tom. Along with Oxford, we have Midwestern Consulting and Lord X Sergeant, familiar local faces helping us with the engineering and the architecture respectively. Next, please. And to help with the big picture. After a two-year search, we found Crawford Hoang in Dublin, Ohio. This is a developer that not only shared our vision, but also our core values. They are behind Bridge Park pictured here, one of the most successful recent developments in the Midwest. This is a photo, not a rendering. It's a photo from about a year ago showing what they've created from nothing. This is ground up. And with that said, I'd like to introduce one of the visionaries behind Bridge Park, Russell Hunter. Russ?
Thank you, Jeff, and I'm really proud of myself. I remembered to unmute. Good night or good evening, everybody. Nice to meet you. Couldn't be more excited to work with you and the entire team on this project. Crawford Hoang has worked in communities all over Ohio, but Bridge Park, but you see there probably our most ambitious and honestly, probably the, the most similar in terms of vision for what we're trying to bring to, to Ann Arbor with Arbor South. So I lead our development team at Crawford Hoang. I went to school for architecture and honestly, I'm kind of a planner at heart. And I think you'll, you'll see that as, as we, as we go through sort of what's driving a lot of the decisions, a lot of the, the vision for what we want to create here. Tom, if you could go to the next slide. So for us, it's, buildings are important, but it really isn't about the buildings that we're building. It's, it's the space between them that makes a great community. And that's, that is the thing that we focus on honestly, more than anything. What's, what we want to set Arbor South apart from what other folks are doing. So what does that mean to us? What does that mean to me? So a few things, so really studying street sections to make sure that it's wide enough to take advantage of street dining, but not too wide that you lose, lose that, that urban intimate feel. It means quality materials throughout and a timeless atmosphere. I mean, you think about, we've been creating, you know, wonderful downtowns for hundreds of years. You know, we're not recreating the wheel. We, we actually do know how to create wonderful walkable communities. And creating great public space, but with the resources available to really take advantage of them. And I always joke, so I lead a development group within our company, but we have a marketing and events team that is larger than my team. They run everything from farmers markets, music series, holiday events. Four Fest, which you see there on the left is, we, we happen to be lucky enough that the Memorial Tournament happens about three miles away from Bridge Park. And so we actually work with, with the PGA to have a festival associated with that. We've learned an awful lot about how to host things like that. But it's these sorts of events that really give Bridge Park a life of its own. At some point, it kind of becomes no longer ours. It's, it's the folks that all live there. Tom, if you can go to the next slide. So what it took at Bridge Park and what it's going to take at, at Arbor South is really, really careful planning to ensure that it operates correctly. And I can tell you that we've got enough experience with this and several projects to have learned from our own mistakes. And so we've, we've really figured out all, all of the stuff that it's going to take. Our team is already thinking about what happens when a farmer's market at Arbor South becomes a runaway success. And our main street wants to go fully pedestrian only for a day, but we still have to service our buildings and our garages. At the end of the day, our goal is to create something truly unique for the Ann Arbor community. And I will personally measure success. The number of folks that come to Arbor South out of curiosity, want to come back next weekend, or better yet, they want to make a home here. And I've personally seen that time and time again at Bridge Park and a, a team of eight people on my team. Three of them live there. And when you consider a, a company that's less than 100 people, I, you know, that for a team of eight, I actually think that's, that's a pretty good stat. So with that, I want to turn it over to our design team who I've just been thoroughly impressed with. And I can't wait for them to share the work that they've done on Arbor South.
All right. Thank you, Russ. Can everybody hear me? Okay? Okay, good. Good. Next slide. So just talking about context, I know you all are familiar with where we're talking, but just gonna make sure we, we're all on the same page, starting there. On the corner of South Street and Eisenhower is this 23 acre site. Currently on the site, there is 777 Eisenhower, a 10-story office building. And then there's a three-story office building adjacent to that. And it's very close to Briarwood Mall, as you all know. Next slide. This is looking at it a little bit closer. Some of the features that are on there right now is the office buildings I talked about. There's a gas station on the corner. And there's, there's a lot of parking, as Jeff mentioned earlier. We are gonna make sure that we accommodate all that parking in the future and then some for the, for the next use that, that's being proposed. Next slide. Now, in this design process, what you see in the, in the subsequent, the following slides. You know, there's been a lot of planning. Just been thinking about this for years, him and his team. And we've been looking at different options with their group for, for a couple of years now. And then as the larger group, the team we have now, we are really honing in on and trying to educate ourselves with the TC1 zoning ordinance. And, and what you'll see in the next pages is, is really answering to, to what that code is. Next slide.
So Ben leads our architecture team. My name is Matt Cherry. I'm a landscape architect and I lead our urban design and landscape architecture team. We do primarily large-scale master planning. The first thing that we looked at when we started looking at the site is obviously what we call a super grid. It's almost 1,200 feet. And so the sort of approach to make a more human scale place is to break that grid down. But we're not starting from scratch. We're keeping some of the existing streets and we have two office towers. So how the, the sort of first exercise was to try to extend the streets and create retrofit, retrofit a grid out of what we already have. We go to the next slide. So Ben showed that slide where we, I mean, we, we looked at, at 35, 45 countless different ways. And ultimately, this is kind of where we landed with the new neighborhood. And that the bones of it are exit, extending the existing streets. Creating a new dynamic public space that really acts as sort of the beating heart of the new neighborhood. And then lining it with really exciting retail that's symbiotic between retail and public space so that it all sort of leads together. That's just sort of the framework of where we were. If you go to the next slide. And then we all have downtown Ann Arbor, obviously. And so we are looking at a lot of not only Bridge Park, but and other examples, but downtown Ann Arbor. Just what is the block size? How does that, the downtown, how does that compare with what we, what we want to create? Downtown Ann Arbor block sizes are somewhere in the 300 to 320 range. Ours as a proposer in the 350 to 380 range. So just to give you senses to scale of kind of how those two things compare. Go to the next slide. And then we can come back to this as sort of more detail, but we're working through your TC1 code and how we perform with that, the block size, percent building frontage and the retail frontage. There's a long list of stuff and at the risk of going into too much detail, I would say, look, we can kind of come back to that because that's pretty granular. Keep going. And this is a master plan, version 43 or whatever, whatever we're at now. And it's got a lot of what I would call porosity. We have, if I can annotate. Yeah, don't worry about it. It's fine. We have a passeo, kind of a pedestrian passeos or connecting that, that's that key public street to an existing pond that we hope to amenitize that creates this sort of connected public space. It's all sort of framed by these sort of, we call them jewel box retail. They're sort of food and beverage concept sort of floating and integrated into this public space. I want to keep going.
The, yeah, that central plaza is really key to the, yeah, development.
Hotel on the, on the bottom left in pink. And structured parking lined as best that we can. The, the sort of hatch area are indicating where we think ground floor retail is going to go. The rest is a mix of for sale and for rent, varying different market price points, residential. Keep going.
So here's, here's where you start to see the massing, the scale of the development. And this is really exciting. We are, we are proposing five over one, five stories of stick-built residential floors with a podium, concrete podium construction, retail base of, of all these buildings. We're keeping the scale the same throughout the development. So there's not, there's just uniformity throughout. And we're going to do some creative things with materials just to make sure there's uniqueness to the building, but it's all going to have the same language. But as Russ mentioned earlier, the wider streets, so there's going to be a lot of activity on that ground floor spilling out from the retail spaces onto the plaza, onto the sidewalks. And as you know, you can notice here, the, the parking structures are really kind of on the perimeter of the site. The idea there is to get people out of their cars as soon as possible and get on foot on the heart of the site. And so it's a lot of, it, it's very promoting of the pedestrian movement throughout. Next slide. So here you can start to see the character and we're, we're really diving into the materials right now in our process. But as I mentioned, every building is going to have its own kind of unique language, its own identity. But it's all going to fit together as, as this community. It's going to be a, a real sense of place when you're here, a destination. So next slide. And with all this, we're, we're looking at a number of sustainability issue items. And as Jeff mentioned earlier, we're going to electrify all the residential units in this development, all thousand plus units. And that's going to allow us to offset some of the energy use with solar power to some degree. And then we're also gonna use solar to heat pools and that sort of thing. We're looking at passive house certification, so energy efficient buildings, major energy reduction, big, big concentration on thermal envelopes of the buildings. So the comfort ventilation, low energy use is, is really key to this development to make it work. Lot of other things. We're looking at water reduction, so Energy Star appliances, energy, low-flow fixtures in all the units that, that will be specified. So a number of things, stormwater management, which Tom can talk about a little bit. But we're, we're definitely paying close attention to the, to the Ann Arbor carbon initiatives and sustainability. Next slide. So this talks more about the place making itself. Next slide. And you know, Russ mentioned earlier, this is the really exciting thing is that these, this central plaza is going to be a very active place. And you know, very similar to Bridge Park, they have an events program, team that sets up programs for, for the space that pretty much runs daily. So it's a very fun, active environment for people to live, work, play, eat in this space.
Our vision for this part of the street thus far is a curb, a very sort of like dynamic, very, very primarily pedestrian sort of curbless street, not too dissimilar from the state project that y'all just finished. But we're really excited about that idea. If you go to the next one, right dives right down into that space again, just a rendering.
Yeah. An idea. But yeah, you can see just the, at the pedestrian level, the shade trees, the park, the green space. You know, think potential stages and live concerts or farmers markets, all those types of things.
Just highlighting a few of the key public spaces that we're thinking about. There's two retention ponds on the site and the, or I, we're starting to come up with some ideas about how to amenitize those. Right now, they're just kind of ponds. But water is a great central piece to a really dynamic amenity space. So we're starting to think about that. Again, mentioned that central plaza and then really starting to play with the way that buildings and finestration work with the public space on the, the main street when you come in straight from State Street. And we're also thinking about where the hotel situated around the corner of Eisenhower State, how that might be kind of like a gateway, a gateway space, a gateway plaza space.
I'm so sorry to interrupt. I want to do a quick time check for your team. It's been just a minute shy of 20 minutes, so I'd advise you, it looks like you're less than halfway through your presentation to pick your most important.
Here. Yeah, we can speed it up. Yeah, as Matt was just talking about the public spaces, there will be private outdoor amenity spaces for the residents. So that's what this slide talks about, just a little example of what we're talking about in the interior courtyards. And then we'll have amenities, indoor amenities that will relate to, to what the branding is for Arbor South. Next slide. And starting to look at material palettes, Russ mentioned earlier, quality materials are, are very important. So we're looking at a lot of brick and metal and glass on the project. Next.
So speeding things up a little bit, I'm, I'm going to touch on mobility and access at to and through the project, our design elements that we are considering as we work through the project and the concept. We enjoy proximity to many great things about the city. And we're really looking to our approach is how we enhance the pedestrian experience here. You've heard the team talk about many of those elements from the pedestrian level. Mix of uses, creating live, work and play. Our designers have created a nice pedestrian scale and element that includes walks around the buildings along the roadways. And we've taken a lot of cues from the reference from the DDA design guidelines in, in our streetscape here. We currently enjoy access to AATA on South State Street and Eisenhower. And we're currently looking at ways to connect with AATA for shelters and to enhance those bus stops. We're really looking to have a bicycle friendly community. There'll be ample bike parking and storage throughout the site, both at surface level and interior to the parking structures. We are also looking at access to the residential buildings for cyclists, so they don't have to necessarily go through the front door. They have the opportunity to use access through the parking structures, really with a goal of making it easy for cyclists. And we're also having discussions currently about interior space for bike storage and repair space so that cyclists will have the opportunity to work on their, their bikes. Utilities, I'm just going to be real brief on that. There's utilities at the site that exist in the corridors throughout the access roads that are there. On this graphic, water is blue, sanitary is orange, dash lines are existing utilities. Solid lines are proposed. You can see here, we're enhancing the water looping and therefore enhancing the reliability of the water system. And then with this, we're also looking for a gravity solution for wastewater to the east. We're currently working with the city engineering and utilities team and a third party looking at study of the utility infrastructure in this area. They're actually working on modeling that. Stormwater management, as it exists at the site today, stormwater is treated in, on three different ponds. This pond here to the southeast, this pond to the north, and then a series of basins that exist kind of diagonal through the site. We plan to treat both quality and quantity. We plan to treat the quality of stormwater with rain gardens throughout the site and the pedestrian and parking areas. We plan to treat quality with first flush chambers, mechanical swirl chambers, policies and practices about fertilizers and then proper landscape planting selections for a project like this. We plan to treat the quantity by utilizing current volume calculations versus old understandings and calculations. So those were a bit different than they were back when the site was originally developed. We plan to have four below grade cisterns that are highlighted here in the blue gray underneath the parking structures. And then we plan to also continue to utilize the existing pond in the southeast and north as part of surface water storage. So I know this is a lot of information. Again, we thank you for your time here tonight. We're excited to share this concept. And we're, we're looking for your feedback, your comments and questions to help inform our project as we work towards finalizing the concept and move into site planning phase. So thank you again. Look forward to your comments.
Thank you. Before we move into discussion, my internet is continuing to be unreliable. So Commissioner White, if I disappear, can I ask you to chair, facilitate conversation and chair the meeting in my absence?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, we are in discussion. Maybe for the moment, you could take the, well, let's leave the presentation up. I'm sure we're going to want to refer to it. Um, for the moment, you could take the, well, let's leave the presentation up. I'm sure we're gonna want to refer to it. Um, it's just a little harder to see each other, but we will manage. Is there anybody who would like to kick us off? Yeah, Commissioner Mills.
Thanks, um. I was pleasantly surprised by how much retail there is, but also skeptical based on what we've heard from others. So I'm curious about how you're feeling about the amount of ground floor retail, or maybe I read that wrong. Um, maybe actually, you're just, we just take comments, yeah?
Yeah, I was gonna say, Tom, if you could go back to the slide that shows Bridge Park. Back to this number four. Yeah. That one I, I introduced with. There you go. Uh. Russ, you're probably the most appropriate to speak to this slide, but I'll just start off to say that. The ground floor of this development, uh it's all retail. And you can see the number of buildings and the retailer is spread throughout. Uh. Because of the density, they've managed to create an incredibly active retail market. Uh, between the restaurants and uh the other uh uses that people in the area will want to. People come there specifically for that retail. And uh, I've, I've been there, I've walked it, it's, it's really quite impressive what the way. Uh, they've, they've mixed the retail and what to me is especially important. Is that the retail in our case isn't gonna just cater to the people that are at Arbor South, but just immediately. To the east is the entire Georgetown neighborhood. And the only way I have access to anything is either go to Briarwood. Or to head downtown, most of them to head downtown, you have to get in a car. Here, they can walk or bike. So there's a huge number of people that will have access to this little node. That don't currently have easy access to retail. May I add anything, Russ?
I think the only thing that I would add to that, so when we, when we say retail, well, I mean, a, a ground floor commercial, right? So we're really, I think, focused on restaurant and entertainment experience. High quality restaurant entertainment experience and any good restaurateur, I think, will tell you that. Um. If you've got another good restaurateur next to you, you both do better as a result of it. And I think that we've seen that. Bear out at Bridge Park in particular, where we've, we've, we've managed to find over the years a lot of really, really good partners. Um, and we tend to kind of bring them with us in some of the different places that we go, just a handful of them that we know are going to. Knock it out of the park. And so what that means then is that we continue to look for some of the more local people, then. It's going to help bring all of that excitement, all of that energy. And I, and it, it really is, it's palpable. I mean, we've probably got twelve restaurants at Bridge Park right now. And all of them do better this year than they did last year. I mean, it, it, it's kind of. I mean, it surprised me quite frankly, um, but it is a testament to, I think, if you get the right mix and you're really thoughtful about how it's put together. You're, you're gonna do, you're gonna do well.
All right, um. Alexis, you have your hand up, and I, I got two more things on my list. About.
Yeah, you wanna jump in?
I'm only gonna um share for scale, they mentioned they're adding one hundred thousand square feet of retail. The average target is one hundred thirty-five thousand square feet. If that helps you put their number in perspective to how much or how little. Thought it might be a helpful tidbit.
Thank you. Yes, I think in acres, because I do rural things, I don't think in square feet. So, okay, great. Um, the other, the other thing that surprised me, and I don't know that it was like the pleasant surprise, I just. Is the corner, because that seems like a not great place to hang out, like to want people to hang out. And so the fact that it's like a little parklet, I know there's was some discussion about like what we do there, but. I'm. In part, one of the things that we, uh, um, again, and I know that, that, uh. TC one maybe tweaks, right? Now that we've seen what it is, but I mean, uh. The, the attention to what happens on signalized intersections and making those particularly active, there's something just north that. I've cycled by many times and there's nobody ever hanging out by the pond, the fountain. To like, no, I'm sorry, just west. So I'm just, I, I don't know how I feel about that, but. Um, it just stuck out to me as like not the place that I would want to hang out. Um, the other thing that I would say is it looks to me and, and I, and you haven't asked for this, but I mean. Um. Well, you have a little bit, is thinking about, uh, what is the right size block? And I now want to take my tape measure around different blocks in Ann Arbor. Because I think some of them are really long and they're too long, like, and to have ones be longer, I'm just thinking like, um. Between. Um, I don't know, there's, uh, I'm try, I'm thinking like South Main Street between Liberty and. William seems really long. If it didn't have that cross, like the mid block crosswalk, it seemed, it would be. Very kind of out of the way. There's others that kind of had, when you head east. Um, and Ally's help, like to get through, um, may, like, maybe it's just that I still have children with small legs. Who want like cut, like sneak paths. And so that's one of the things, like, I really like the sneak path that you have through the center that goes up to the. Pond, but that's one of the things that I personally, before we kind of do big cha- like changes, uh like. What is a block? Like, what is a solid building that is the same as this one? Like, uh, not just on average, but like. If you want to do the homework for us, awesome, otherwise I'll. Look at a map. Um, but that's, because some of this is just like what allows people to get from place to place. Um, and not feel trapped-ish. So, those were my comments. Otherwise, this is like super exciting, like, um, yeah.
Uh, if I could real quick on the block size, we, everything that you just said, we've had so many debates about, about the definition of a block and, you know. We definitely think of the block as. Uh, not in the conventional sense of it has to have a car along it, along all sides to be a block. I don't really think that is. I mean, I think most codes probably de- define it that way, but in reality, that's not really the way we think of it, but. I think the thing with the block size is. Because of the size of a parking deck. Uh, minimum size is typically a hundred and twenty feet wide by two hundred feet long. Um, and you don't really go, go a little bit smaller than that, but otherwise not really. Um, so when you're certainly getting a structured parking, um, you can't really do much. In anything lower than three hundred fifty by three hundred fifty. Because you would, because you would otherwise have exposed deck on three sides.
Which is like the worst kind of.
That's, that's what we do not want to do. I don't think any of us wanted a deck on, exposed on three sides. But because of the size of the standard deck. Uh, you, you were trying to line it, but um you really need a three hundred fifty foot block to line it properly.
Commissioner Mills, are you rep?
I'm done, yeah.
Maybe I'll just. Jump in quickly to say that it might be helpful to distinguish between a kind of automobile block and a pedestrian block, right? So that's what Commissioner Mills was pointing out. So if the automobile block needs to be three fifty by three fifty, there could be pedestrian cut-throughs, obviously, that are. Um, that bypass that. Okay, Commissioner Hammer Schmidt.
Thank you. Uh, first of all, thank you so much for bringing this project to us, for being our TC one guinea pig. Um, very excited to see this as the first, first thing that we see for a TC one zoning. Um. I just have a couple comments, I think. Overall, this is great and I love it. I think it's really important to pay attention to the relationship to State Street, as Commissioner Mills mentioned, the corner. I think internally, things look really good, like I really like the central area. Um, I like the private amenities. And outdoor spaces for, for residents, but like, I'm gonna wanna know. What's going on on State Street? Like, is there an amenity zone? I think I saw some hash marks for ground floor retail, but like. How are we not just like, what's going on inside, but like really making sure that the relationship to State Street? Cause that's, that was sort of our whole point with TC one, was like, how do we reclaim these corridors? I will let you respond if you want, but you don't have to. That's something I'm hoping to see when you come back.
If, if, if I can really, really quickly. So I, I totally agree with you and it's. It, it, it's always a challenge, right? When you get these, these sort of new codes. You've got the, this vision for what happens in ten or twenty years, and when the first thing comes along, you're dealing with the new, but you're dealing with what's still there, right? And so you're trying to, you're trying to make it feel right day one, even when, when the whole vision hasn't been totally. Hasn't totally come to fruition yet. We do see that everything, and you can actually see in this image, the, the darker orange there. Um, there along State Street on the building on the left. The, all of the active uses of that hotel in the pink would all be on the ground floor. So I think that those, those will absolutely be active uses. I think that we've done a couple of additional things, so like what I'm calling our main street, that is that basic, the, the, the street that goes all the way through. We've widened it. As it, as it approaches State Street to make sure that especially as you're traveling northbound, as you're going into town from, from the freeway. That there's that, that aperture, right? So as you're coming up, you can actually see what's going in. We're trying, trying to break down those corners a little bit, and I think that there's, there's some design um moves that we're exploring. That will break down those corners even more, so that you, you get a sense that everything, the energy that's from the inside is spilling out. And I think that to some degree, that is what we're, what we're, what we're dealing with on the Eisenhower and State corner with that parklet that's there. Because. In my mind, if like, say that A one building, if you were to pull it all the way to Eisenhower. But on the other three intersections, you've got really, really, like, really, really wide setbacks. Then that building might start to feel really strange in the short term. And so if there are ways in which we can activate that space, but still give it just a little bit of breathing room. Then I feel like we can do something that feels good today and feels good tomorrow. And so what that's gonna mean though, is that we're gonna have to design it really carefully, one, but we're, we're also gonna have to make sure that, as an example. Um, the spaces on the ground floor of that hotel need to like require outdoor spaces, right? So it starts to flow through. Um, we don't have those spaces designed yet, but I can tell you, that's, that's the kind of things that's in my mind.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I think you're right. I think it is, it's, it's, it's a. It's kind of like the in-between, like what happens, like you want to, you wanna be something that's an example, maybe for the other corners. But not feel like. Totally odd, I guess, or like. So yeah, it's, it's a challenge, like when you're taking it on. Um, and I, I don't know how you're planning on like phasing the builds, but you know. I'm just thinking, there's a project when I was living in Austin and they did like a lot of the like. Frontage facing like retail first, and it sort of made people like really interested in it and then built like out the residential like in the back. It's sort of like created that buzz before there was more there that sort of like drew people in, so I don't know, just think about phasing. This is a direct question, um. Thank you for all electric residential. I am curious, what about the sandal and retail on the hotel that I saw on the map? But have you already had conversations with DTE about grid capacity? Because the last thing I want is for you to come back to us for approval. And be like, oh, we have to, we can't because DTE.
Yeah, so we, we have engaged DTE. Uh, we've engaged through their planners and their engineers currently. They're very interested in this project because of. Uh, other projects that are happening in the area, right? So we have shared with them information regarding our load, our load by use. And uh, we are currently working with them to determine um those specific answers about capacity. And demand.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm really, really hoping that they're able to work with you on this.
We don't have an a- answer yet, but it's coming. Yep.
Okay, um. And I guess I'll just, the last thing I'll just say, like, this definitely feels like a destination and a district and, and. One of you in the presentation, when you're talking about the interior amenities, said something about like the, the branding. And I'm just curious if, if there is already, I know it's Arbor South, but like, is there a brand, like, is there a, like, what is that gonna be? For people to like, feel like, oh, that's the, you know, it's the arts district, it's the, it's the blah, 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 whatever, like. I think it would be really cool if it was something. Cause it's such a good location, like, it's just, like, it's somewhere, like, people, like, from the city, but also it's such easy access, like, from the highway to, like, be able to, like, come. And experience like all the stuff that's going on here and the shopping and the restaurants, so I'm just like. If there is a branding, I'm excited to hear more about it. When you come back.
More to come on that.
Yes, I'm very, very, again, like, appreciative of you guys being our first TC one project and. Just look forward to all of your feedback, as Commissioner Mills mentioned, we know that it needs some tweaking, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Weatherby.
Alright, so yes, thank you for bringing this. I know we've all. Had our own dreams about what might go here over the years. Um. I have a couple comments and these are just. Uh, you know, as I'm looking through this and thinking about it, they may not all hold together, um. I agree with Commissioner Hammer Schmidt about the, um. How it relates to State and Eisenhower, because right now. It feels a little bit to me like. An ungated community, um, you know, that the happenings are on the inside with parking structures around the outside. And. That's kind of not the same as a vision for this part of the city. It's sort of a vision for this development. And sort of how it, how it meshes with it, you know, how it fits in with Ann Arbor. Like, oh, there's retail and there's, you know, it's a downtown space and it's got a farmer's market, but. Ann Arbor already has a lot of those things and how it kind of, um. You know, lifts all boats instead of kind of taking, taking what's already good about downtown Ann Arbor. Or other parts of Ann Arbor, you know, how do we make it? Or how do you make it? Uh, sort of, you know, another great place, not instead of something that's. Already existing. So that's just a, it's just a thought that I've had. I don't have any answers. Um, I would like to see, oh, and I, I think you've done it some, and I love the grid. Like, it's great to see a new development that's a grid, not a turnaround rendezvous circle, whatever. That doesn't connect to things, like, I love that you've specifically connected. Um, but. But definitely like, and this, this might be something on the city side, it might be, but the connections across Eisenhower and the connections across state. Because that's really tricky right now and, and actually I live on South Main by the stadium and. Super easy to walk actually down here, there's lots of good, it's super easy to bike, but getting across state and Eisenhower are tough. Like, those are the, that's actually the tricky part. So, um, with like Wolverine Tower right across the street, I mean, that would be a great place for people to live. But that, those kind of. How, how it exits the development or enters the development for people who live there, but also. For people who are coming to enjoy the, the spaces and the amenities, um. So that just, something in my head about those, um. Uh. How do people feel welcomed? How does it work for people visiting, um? The, all five over ones with sort of the anchor office building, I get it, but it's also. Like, I've been to a lot of. Kind of off the highway suburban developments that are all the same height with an anchor office building. And a big park in the middle and like, it's, it's fine if you're going there to stay in that hotel. That's always there too, but like, again, how does it become sort of a little more interesting, a little more? And maybe it's the design, the materials, um, but that's just a, another thought I had. And then, uh. Just a couple things we've heard over the past. Several meetings about accessibility. And accessibility in the new apartments, which I think is an enormous benefit for new buildings, is that there is sort of federal. Levels of accessibility, but also what are the other things that kind of can be more welcoming in a way that older buildings do have a harder time? And, and so like, an eye toward accessibility. I don't know that we've talked about it too much, but we did have. We've had, I, I've heard it more from people where it just sort of the standard level of accessibility, kind of really being an enhanced. Level of accessibility that, that isn't onerous, but that is welcoming. Um, and then, uh. The last thing I had was sort of, and I, I, I wrote it down as bike parking for visitors, but it's also. If you're, if you don't live here. We have the parking, but also what are the things, so restrooms and. we have the parking, but also what are the things? So restrooms and bike parking and things like if you're coming here, are there, if we're gonna, if there's gonna be, you know, um, events and where do you hang your coat? Where do you go to the bathroom? Where do you change a diaper? Where do you do, you know, that sort of more welcoming, which I don't know that our downtown does a great job of. Um, and I think we're working on it, but uh, you know, how does that space kind of really welcome people? Because that seems to be what you really want is, is to create a really welcoming space. And sort of just some of those that that I know when I've, we've gone places like on bikes and there's, we know there's bike parking, but there's not bike parking for visitors. So that kind of thing. So those are just thoughts in my head. Again, I don't, I don't have the answers, but there are things that are, when, when you're creating a whole space that come to mind for me.
Thanks, Commissioner Dish.
Thank you. This is such, this has been such a rich conversation, both the presentation and all these great comments. So, um, this is very exciting to see. It looks different. I mean, I know it's changed a lot and it looks so much different than when I first started, you know, learning about it because I thought there was going to be a lot of height. So I'm actually intrigued and excited by, um, kind of, you've taken the Berlin approach to things, which is that buildings are so high and you want the streets and the building to be in proportion to each other. And, um, so that is, I think that that, that can, can really work and I'm really excited about that. I had a, I have a technical question about how will you manage the affordable housing? I'm really, really excited that you're proposing to bring us 200 units of affordable housing because the only way we're going to make our goals on that is if we have some, um, private market action on that. So how, how will it be managed to make sure that, will you be working off the city's waitlist? Do you, have you thought about that yet? This might, I'm sorry, this might not be a, a good question for right now, but, but that is a question that will, that, that I will have or that one would have. And I, I think that, I don't, I don't know what we're going to do about the block sizes. So would that be a ZBA thing that we would do? Would it be a tweak to TC one itself? But I don't know that we want to make it possible for all TC one to do what this is doing. This is such an unusual site because you have so much space. And where else we're looking on TC one doesn't have this kind of space. So you really do get to, you know, build it. You get to almost start fresh. And so I think we really want to make that possible. And perhaps I don't, that's maybe not a question for here. That's a strategy question and staff can probably guide you on that. But this is, um, the connectivity here is really beautiful and, um, agreeing with, with Julie and Sarah about making sure that it's possible for people to walk across the street, across Eisenhower and State and get in, because they're going to want to get in. Okay. You know, if they don't live there, they're going to want to be able to come across from Eisenhower and State, which as we know right now are not appealing. So that's a scattershot set of questions, but a, a tremendous amount of enthusiasm from me.
So I'm noticing the time. It's eight 55. I think we're aiming to wrap up around nine. So, um, I want to give an opportunity for any other important questions or comments from commissioners. Commissioner Wedge.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing this project. I was able to come to the citizen participation meeting. So I, I've seen it, uh, at that iteration and some changes. And so I just wanted to check on some things that I heard you say at that meeting that maybe didn't come out in this conversation. So one on the parking lots, um, at the citizen participation meeting, you seem to indicate that you were going to do floor planes that you could later convert either into housing or office. Have you decided to abandon that? Or is that still a part of your vision for those parking structures?
I, I think that is absolutely still something that we would, would want to, because the, the truth is, is it's relatively easy to do. Um, as long as you're thinking about it upfront and, and we did that at Bridge Park as well. So we didn't touch on it tonight, but I don't see any reason why we wouldn't continue to go down that path. At least for, um, you know, if you think about like a three bay parking structure, the bay that's closest to the, to the light, like there's no reason not to be thinking that way.
Something I heard that was new to me and maybe you, you mentioned it at the citizen meeting and I just didn't hear it, is that you're going to have for sale as well as for rent? Did, did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, that is, that is the plan. And I think we're, we're still trying to to figure out what the balance is between the two, but I think that there's, there's opportunity and I think there's market for both.
Okay. On the DTE issue, the developer that's putting in the housing at Briarwood indicated that there wasn't enough capacity for them to go all electric. So I just wanted to daylight that in case that wasn't, um, on your radar screen. And I don't know if you're on the same substation. Um, so as you, uh, start to look into that, just make sure that you're, you're getting, um, good data about what their electric capacity looks like. I have a question for staff. So, um, Mr. Leo, this is already zone TC one. So this is a by right development. So they're not coming for any modifications or changes. It would just be within the existing zoning. Is that correct?
Well, well, yes, yes.
Alexis, you have a pretty serious echo. Is it possible that you have two devices on?
No, no.
Sorry to interrupt. I'm not sure.
Maybe kill your speaker for a minute.
Alexis has a, is really skilled at using headsets, one of the best in the office.
Okay. Can you hear me? No. Oh, wait, is it working now?
It's working, but there's still a extreme echo.
If you text me what you want to say, Alexis, I'm happy to say.
I can, I can, I can ask another question in the event you can solve that. The, the other thing you mentioned at the citizen participation mem, uh, meeting was, um, the, the use of public art as well as indoor amenities and or covered bike parking. I don't know if that's on any of your drawings or anything you want to sort of show us, because I know that's something that is of interest. And in particular, trying to gauge like how you plan to, um, address the, the bollards down your main street and how you imagine bike and cyclists moving through the site. Cause my daughter, uh, goes to an aerial camp that's just on the other side of Broadway. And when I drop her off, I usually take my bike and then bike into town and do an hour while she's at her session. And then sort of come back. And so I'm cutting through the parking lots or I'm going up the driveway for the Anna Republic schools where the buses are. And, um, I have had some near misses with the buses. So this would be a, a better pathway, but if there, if it's still going to be preferential for cars, that, that won't be true. And so I just wonder if you could just speak to that briefly about how you want to make that more pedestrian feeling friendly or cyclist friendly.
I can give you just a few seconds to the art piece. That's kind of my department, which is, uh, Oxford's got a huge passion for art. Uh, you may, uh, be aware of the, the big mural full, so the 200, 210 South Fifth behind, uh, uh, African delight. That's one of ours. Uh, behind Potbelly in the alley, the 3D mural. The one, the one that kind of looks like you kind of reached into it. That's one of ours. Art's a big part of my family. So I have every intention of making sure that we invest heavily in, in public art. At this point, we're still obviously trying to make sure the whole project makes sense, but my, these guys know that I won't shut up. Sometimes it talks about trying to cover a parking structure with art instead of, you know, just looking at the cars. See Russell's cracking up at me, but, uh, it, it is really important to me. Who wants to talk about biking?
I do have a, while you're deciding that, a quick response from Ms. Delio, which is that yes, it's zone TC one. They want to develop it as TC one. So in that sense, it is by right. However, as presented, their concept would require a number of variances and or, um, something, uh, of more, more serious consideration, which would be changes or text amendments to the TC one district. So this, um, as everyone knows, is one of our first TC one, uh, developments. It's also happens to be very large site that uh, is different than maybe the smaller infill that TC one was envisioned for. So it's very seriously stress testing how well that zone can work. And, um, to do some of the things that are, uh, presented and requested, like parking in a typical fashion, which could be converted to housing with liner buildings. They're exceeding some of the standards that, uh, we set out for block lines, et cetera. So yes and no is what the answer to that is.
Okay. So there, it's going to be a, maybe a complicated approval because it's not going to stop at the planning table. If they're making text amendments unless the text amendments precede the site plan. And then, um, they get those approved and then write a site plan for those text amendments, then it would stop. But if they brought them together, it would go, um, first to planning, then to city council.
It's not yet clear if this team is interested in requesting a text amendment and going through that process. They've been presented with that option, but haven't yet indicated that they would like pursue that. Um, they've just been asking, uh, quite a lot of questions about how different ideas would work uh, on their site within the TC one zone. But at a minimum, it would require some visits for ZBA.
To the ZBA. Okay. Thank you.
On the, on the bike and mobility question, if I could real fast, um, I'm somebody who rides my bike to work almost every day. And, um, I, I think the idea would be typically when we approach things like this is you design the street for pedestrians and micro mobility and bikes and cars are a polite guest. Is, if, if that makes sense.
It does. I mean, I think, you know, barriers to cars make the best sense to me. So things that make it hard for cars to zip through a space like this, um, it are the best things. Um, and because people will, will try to force their vehicles through whatever is there. So may,
I know.
If, if you have a unforgiving built infrastructure, it will de-incentivize that. But then your lawyers and your insurance carriers may have other thoughts. One, one more, um, question and or comment for Abrams, if that's okay. Okay. And, and I don't make any offense by this. I, I went to school in Ohio. I live here in Michigan. I grew up in DC. I have no allegiances to any, you know, of these regions, uh, per se. But I have spent a lot of time in the Columbus area in the Eastern Town Center. Like how I, I was thinking about this in that context. Can you either help me make sense of that? Or can you disabuse me of that? Um, because that is a, a site I have in mind that I've spent a lot of time and I haven't unfortunately been to your other site where it would be a fair comparison, but I'm just trying to locate myself in the space and that's the closest, um, analog for me. So any, any comments uh, for any of you Ohioans that want to speak to that and, and, and put me on the right path.
Please, please, please let me answer this one. So I, I love this question, uh, for a number of reasons, because I actually in my time as an architect and planner, had done some work at Easton. Steiner and Associates was a developer there. So I, I know the place really well. Bridge Park and Eastern are very, very different. Um, and there's a couple of ways that I, I think I can pretty easily, um, help to understand that. So Easton is Disneyland, first of all, and, and, and anybody that had anything to do with it would totally admit that it's a retail Disneyland. And, and so when you go in, but you'll see there's a couple of things that I think right off the bat, the scale of the buildings, um, so Easton is all two and three stories. Some of their later stuff they did up to like three and four. Um, but they never thought about vertically integrated mixed uses. It's almost expressly retail. So there's no residential whatsoever, um, in the first and second phases of Easton. There's again, a little bit in like the phases, three and four. Same thing you can say with, uh, with the office. Having the, the residential and the office uses is key in making sure that you've got a site that is active 18 hours, right? It's like you're, if you want those restaurants to succeed and you want them to do just as good on a Tuesday afternoon as a Saturday afternoon. If you don't have people living there and working there, that restaurant's not going to succeed. And that's something that, that, um, we take really, really seriously because we want our restaurants to succeed, right? But I think the other thing about Easton that's really, really interesting, if you look at a site plan, it starts in the middle and it works out. And so you, you don't really know that you're there until you're right in the middle of it. Um, and there's really no way to like, to penetrate it. It's lined by parking structures and parking lots all along the outside. And there's, there's no connection in. And I think that Bridge Park, and I actually think that, that Arbor South is, is also a great example, both just like Bridge Park is, is that if, if TC one is as successful as we think it's going to be, then there will come a day where you won't be able to tell where Arbor South stops and the next thing starts. Because all of these things, the, the grids will work together, the, 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 the roads will work together, the sidewalks will work together. And it will be a community. And I think that that is something that if you walk around Easton, you know really fast when you get to the edge of it. And, and that's something that we've tried really, really hard not to do. So hopefully that helps answer that question.
It does. You, you came alive with it. So thank you so much. Back to you, Chair Abrams.
All right. Um, Commissioner Clark or Adams, any quick comments or questions?
None here.
Good.
Okay. Um, I have just one really quick comment, which is, I'm sure you have considered this, but I would love to see a serious consideration of actually just closing that central plaza to automobiles altogether. Diverting traffic north and south. So people who want to park in C1 come up boardwalk and the others can circle around. So something, I mean, unfortunately the model that comes to mind for me is the Grove, which is, you know, not maybe what I, what I want to conjure here, but, um, I think that that would actually make a lot of sense in this case. It's hard for me to imagine cars passing through that central zone. Otherwise I had, I had comments and questions, which were already covered by other commissioners. So uh, it's an exciting project and we look forward to following along as it develops. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we have one more opportunity for public comment at the end of our meeting. You can use the raise hand feature in Zoom. This is an opportunity to address the commission about any topic of your choice. You'll have up to three minutes. We'll give it a minute and see if anybody raises their hand. Um, if you do speak, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm not seeing hands raised yet.
Give it one more beat.
Still no hands.
Still no hands. All right then, we'll move on to our final agenda item, which is adjournment. Have a nice evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to meet all of you.
You too. Thank you.